We are called to order at 6:01 PM. Welcome to everybody. It's nice to be in person. Hopefully, we'll do a little bit more of this in the coming months. So we are going to take attendance. We have, I'm just going to read it since I was not here. Darren Rose. Evan, teach me how to say your last name, please.
Prez Barosky.
Prez Barosky?
Yep.
Awesome, great. Jim Carter. Greg Pios. Dwayne Stanley. Bella Gorman. Dr. Mowley and myself. Was it okay? Easy pronunciation. I appreciate it. All right, next up on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody for public comment tonight? Excellent. All right, consent agenda items. We had two items that were added today for review. They are the construction budget information sheets. There should be two documents. Does anybody have any question on those? Any points of discussion?
Please, can you send us?
They were in Board on Track, but they were late additions to Board on Track. But they're in there now if you want to take a look. Right, there are an issue financials, which is in the agenda, not the recent. There's an updated agenda on Board on Track as well, which is not the printed out version. Leona, anything to call out or is it good to stay?
No, great, it's good.
Okay, awesome. If you review and have any questions before the end of the meeting, you can bring it up and share business. All right, the only vote we have tonight is, this is very quick tonight, guys. The only vote we have tonight is the approval of the Board of Trustees meeting minutes from August 29th, 2024. Do we have any questions about the agenda and the, I mean, sorry, the minutes and the edits? Do I have a motion to approve? Paul Second. Thank you. Roll call vote for agenda items? We'll just do it, just to be formal. So Darren?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes, yes. I'm going to abstain.
Yes, yes, for me. Great, so we've got. Okay, moving on to updates. Marcy, fundraising update.
Do you want me to go here?
Yes, because it's being ordered for me, please, thank you.
Face the hallway.
If you want, you can grab a microphone. You just want to sit here and grab a microphone?
No, it's fine, I just, this is fine. I don't have much to say.
Yeah, we got extra seats if you want to just come and join the circle. Yeah. So we could sit down some.
I just didn't want to stand there.
Great, so we had our inaugural Running with the Eagles event on September 14th. We had about 65 participants, which was great for the first time out. Made a little money. We were thinking maybe we were going to break even, so that's good news. The Lower School Fund Run is on October 30th. And we are anticipating, hopefully, similar success to last year. It raised around $20,000. So we have a meeting tomorrow to continue to work on that. The Bourbon Raffle is still running. We have like 75-ish, I think, tickets sold. And we're still publicizing it. We had a STEM Story Eagles Board meeting last night. We publicized it to that group. We are starting to loosely form the Anniversary Planning Committee. We sent a notice out to the staff today and to the parent community asking for volunteers who want to participate on that. We, I was very happy to have three responses within 10 minutes, which was really exciting. So that's good news. And I am thinking that we will, hopefully, have a representative from this group, maybe, or, you know, come, you know, maybe Evan, I'm not sure, because this group is, the Anniversary Committee is going to be reporting to the Development Committee. We can talk about that at our Development Committee meeting. But we also talked to the STEM Story Eagles Board last night about having a representative from that committee, or from that board to be on this committee too. And again, I have a pretty deep list of ideas for that, but I certainly am not the whole decision maker on what we're going to do. So we're really looking for a lot of feedback from people on all of the things that we can do throughout a year. So we spent two school years for this anniversary, which is really nice opportunity. And we also talked about ways to get kids engaged too today. So I think that should be good.
When's the kickoff date of the?
So we think we're going to do the kickoff when we do the ribbon cutting for the new building.
Oh, cool.
Sort of roll it all into one big January event. We were talking January before we knew when the transformer was coming. And now that we know that the transformer is here-ish.
Did it get dropped off?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, right. So January, I think, is realistic again, because when we were thinking we would have to move back to March or April or May, we were thinking, so the theory that I have going right now is that we will do something every month of the year. 2025, probably not July, but we'll have something going on. Not some huge thing, but something ceremonial, you know, tree planting or a mural. Or we've talked about having an event in each of the core towns to bring the community together, all sorts of things. So that's exciting for us. The Business Partners Program is still going really well. Mary Jo Naraki and Cindy Zomark, who are the two main volunteers who are working on that, made presentations at both of the back to school nights this week and last week, which they actually got a little more traction with the Lower School Back to School Night. I think some of the parents were hearing the fundraising information for the first time. And so we've had a couple of parents reach out to us with referral names, which is really, really gratifying. And so we're following up on those. We actually had a meeting with a local business this week. And Mary Jo came to the STEM Story Eagles Committee meeting last night to make a presentation too. So that is still going very well. We've decided to apply for Mass Cultural Council money this year for a couple of programs that we have budget relieving. We're doing the one that you can apply through each town. So I think we're actually going to throw in an application for each of our four towns. It's not much money at all. They run $350 to $750. But there's a lot of really good press that comes along with getting a grant like that. So that's, those are due mid-October. So that's one of the things that we're focused on. The bricks were delivered, I feel like maybe around September 8th or something. So all the bricks are here. We're talking a little bit more about what the layout might look like. Do we need to actually order something a little more ceremonial that says AMSA's name for the middle of them? We're working out all those things. The plan right now, I think, is to install the bricks in November. But Eric has explained several times that the way they will be installed, we will have flexibility to add or shift, which is nice. Because more when we talked about this last month, you actually asked if there might be opportunity to add, and there will be. So that's good news. And we did send out a fundraising letter to the whole school community, maybe two weeks ago, just sort of highlighting all of the ways that people can participate. You can volunteer, you can make a referral, you can make an outright gift, you can join a committee, all of these other things. And so we will continue to touch base with our community in various ways throughout the year. Again, I believe that I'm going to make some sort of presentation, maybe next month or the month after, that is the overall development plan for the whole year, but need to talk it through with the Development Committee first. And we have a meeting loosely on the books right now for October 16th, I think, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll work it out in that group and then we'll come here. And you'll see that the calendar sort of has a couple of development touchpoints throughout the entire year spread out. You know, there's the Giving Tuesday, which is a certain date that we need to follow. But then we have flexibility to shift things around and, you know, touching the various populations at different times. Any questions? That's all?
Thank you, Marcy.
You're welcome.
Next is the parent representative update.
Yep, so good start to the year. Seems like for every board meeting, there's at least one email that comes into my email, which is great. So that means that folks know that the email is active and people are reaching out when they want to. So this email was about eligibility for the free lunch program that all Marlboro schools and other schools are eligible for. And they were asking about, because if we have a new building, will there be kitchen space in the new building? And will that address, you know, will that be able to address the free lunch program with a kitchen and all that kind of stuff? So that was a question from a parent. So any thoughts?
So just factual information, there is no kitchen in the new building. It takes a lot more than that to become eligible for the federal lunch program. It is a very restrictive program when it comes to dietary satisfaction for kids. We have looked into whether or not that our provider can meet those restrictions. And it would be very, very challenging. The other thing that being part of the federal program would do would be, it would eliminate any type of food fundraising that the kids do, such as bake sales for their clubs, because you cannot do those when you're part of the federal lunch program. So unfortunately, because we don't have much control over the food that the kids buy, we have control, but we don't have that restrictive control. I mean, they count fat, they count carbs, everything is wheat-based. So that's not how we do it here at AMSA, because we don't have our own kitchen. And unless we had our own kitchen, ability to serve all the students, which is not eligible.
Thank you. What I'll do is I'll connect with this parent for follow-up, just to.
And if they want to phone call with me, just let them know, no problem.
Okay.
Yep.
And that was, it reached out to me, no major updates on that front. So that's what I have for today.
I think they had their uniform sale the same day as 5K, so.
Excellent, all right, any questions for Dwayne? All right, great, thank you, Dwayne. Next is the faculty representative update, Greg.
So things are running smoothly. I've gotten a decent number of responses, including what I believe is my first ever positive response to one of my feedback surveys. Usually, it's just a bucket of complaints, but I actually got a positive one, so take that as a good sign. I suppose September is kind of a month where things just sort of turn along. The schedule seems to be working okay. I think people are pretty settled in, and I think I said this last meeting, but it's definitely going smoother than it did last year with sort of new software, like Power School, et cetera. So on that front, things seem to be good. One specific thing that I have been hearing is people have been interested in sort of fundraising opportunities for the new building. I have teachers asking about like, oh, could we do a gala? Could we have students serve food, et cetera? And I had a meeting with Lisa today where we talked about this. It's good to hear that people want to get involved. So I definitely think, I think that was a lot of information, Marcy, from fundraising. So I'm going to try and transmit that to the staff as best I can, because they definitely seem to be interested in.
Absolutely, and if they want to join the Anniversary Planning Committee, they should feel free to reply to that email also.
That's pretty much all the news I've got, so.
That's fabulous. Can I, can I ask what the positive?
I can quote it to you. It's not very, it's not very specific, but hold on. I have the survey results up right now. If I could actually find it, hold on, the computer's refusing to connect. Quote, "I think the start of the year has been pretty smooth. Students seem to have generally settled in well."
Awesome, sounds great.
Nice of that as positive as I've ever gotten.
You know, I think we have to dig into the not so positive, and I think we should dig into the positive too. So I'm glad it's been answered, so that's awesome. Any questions for Greg? Awesome, okay, moving right along, Dr. Mowley.
So just for tonight, I'm going to do an overview of a few things, because it was timely for September. I'm going to talk a little bit about AMSA and college missions. We're going to go quick SAT score review. And then on September, we're supposed to review the strategic plan, again, broad balcony view. And then suppose keeping updates. All right, so let's talk data. This was an interesting data dive. Again, what I was trying to do is figure out if, in fact, students from AMSA were not doing as well, being accepted to the top 30 schools. And again, so they just changed today after I did this. But I dug deep into some ID's. And at first glance, I can understand why parents are asking this question. Because if you look straight at this slide, it does look like the percentages of kids accepted to these different universities and colleges were better in the cohort of 2011 to '17 than they are in 2018 to '24. But again, that's just looking at it with the straight view and nothing else. So taking a little bit of a deeper dive into AMSA's acceptance rates. This shows you the class, all the applications that went out, the number of acceptances and the percent accepted. And then it divides it from all applications to just the ID applications. So one thing that was important in the previous slide that I just didn't mention was that in 2022, 26 students applied to Brown that year, but only two met the qualifying GPA and standardized test scores. One of them applied early decision and one of them replied regular decision. And the early decision individual was accepted. So. I think what we saw, what I saw a lot in 2022 and 2023 was a lot of what I like to call spaghetti against the wall. So it was the COVID years, COVID recovery years, let's say. And students were applying to just see if they could get in. So we had a lot of rejections in those two years. Those numbers are very skewed. But on average, AMSA kids, you can see in 2011, they get into 63% of the colleges and universities that they applied to. And in 2024, it's only down slightly, 52%. You can see where 63 was kind of a high as well. Since the class of 2017, ID acceptance rates have held pretty steady, with the exception, like I said, of 23 and 22 and 23. You can also see that as the number of applications submitted by students kind of increase, the acceptance rate kind of generally decreases. Talk a little bit about that, why, what will come inside? Students who are accepted to the top-tier schools are more likely accepted if they are applying early decision or early action. Remember, early decision is a binding decision. It's a contract you made with the college, and that is sealed if they accept you. Early action, you have, you continue to have flexibility. So what are some things happening at the college and university level? Well, admissions slots are declining and application rates are increasing. And again, diving into nadions and the kids who apply, students have been denied admission most likely because their standardized test scores and their GPAs have been below the accepted averages.
Do we know at the schools where tests are optional, whether or not our students are submitting the optional tests?
No, I'm talking more, so you can only, we could only maybe figure that out if we looked only at these last couple of years, because prior to COVID, it was not test optional. And the interesting piece, I've been on webinars over the past two weeks with Harvard, Yale, Princeton, Wellesley, University of Virginia, Duke, and then we had Georgia Tech, Purdue, Harvey Mudd and Olin here. Many of the schools, and last year presented SATs saying, do they really matter? If you remember that presentation, there, most schools, if not this year, next year, will be going back to asking for the test. The test will no longer be test optional. In the conversations with the admissions councils, however, if it is a test optional school, unless you have near-perfect boards, do not send out. That was the message that I got from sitting in all those webinars.
I guess the music's going to stop.
So taking a look at our kids now and then, because we're still trying to figure out some of the why behind this, really, you can see that the GPA has kind of remained steady. And this is the average GPA. The percent acceptance kind of remains steady. But you can see in 2022 and 2023, clearly, the number of apps for students is way up there. Colleges are tracking everything kids do. Whether they follow them on social media, how many likes their university gets, everything that kids are doing. What the colleges accept. So basically, these are the SAT averages, the minimum SAT, ACT, GPA, and then the percentage of acceptance are our kids to the right. What's really, really impressive is if you start looking at tier-one research schools, the percentage of our students getting into tier-one research schools surpasses their average acceptance rates at many of these universities. And I think that that's something to consider before making some sort of blanket statement that AMSA is not getting kids into the same schools that they used to. Because one of the questions is, are, really, are our kids applying to the same schools that they used to apply? And the answer is no. The schools that AMSA students are applying to has broadened greatly since 2011. And again, they're focusing on these research schools and universities. Yield protection. So before starting this deep dive, I didn't know what this was. The yield protection. Yield is the percentage of students accepted to the college who actually attend. College benefits directly from having a high yield rate. And colleges care a lot about their relative place in the rankings. And yield is one of the many factors used to calculate them. So while they increase their yield rate, colleges have a chance to directly impact their place in the rankings. And on today's call with Harvard, they specifically emphasized that their yield percentage was up at 84% this year over last year. In many cases, students are rejected just to protect the yield. Interesting conversation with an admissions counselor from Georgia Tech when they were here, who wanted us to know that had the application of our valedictorian risen to her level, it probably would have been an acceptance, but the student applied regular decision and Georgia Tech figured that that student had applied to Georgia Tech as a backup and was denied because they figured it was backup. I'm sure it was. This individual is at an ID and doing really well. So I don't think there's any tiers there, but it's still kind of yucky. It's kind of yucky.
It's worse than that. I mean, the industry is brutal. I can tell you from the college side that it's not just, oh, we think we're their backup. It extends to like, if Danny went to Cornell, don't let Harvard know on your Harvard application.
Yeah, yeah.
And Harvard's not my client, by the way. Just as an example, but they care so much about people saying yes when the school says yes, that if they have any kind of inkling that you'll say no if you're accepted, you can move out of the list.
And it's tricking down to schools like UMass. Like we used to, you know, as a former guidance counselor, I used to, you know, counsel my kids to have UMass as a backup. UMass knows when you have it as a backup now. And there are AMSA students who are rejected from UMass because their profile is too good and UMass because they'll go someplace else. So, well, we'll talk about some things to try to combat that. So my conclusions. Acceptance rates really have remained steady with our students being accepted to, on average, 55% of the schools that they apply to. Students are applying to more further-reach schools than ever before. AMSA students are applying to tier-one research universities over schools ranked just in the top 30. What matters to students has changed over the years. And there appears to really be no link between rigor or lack thereof in the current admission percentages. AMSA still offers beyond-college courses, and our students continue to perform well. Conversation with parent after parent who has had an AMSA graduate, they tell me that year one is a breeze for their child. AMSA really is a public school offering a private school education. So just a few stats that are up there. 49 students from the class of 2024 are attending a tier-one research university. And there was 127 students there. Students are also, and I had an interesting conversation with the director of guidance, who was extremely helpful, and I will give her a big thanks at the end of this for this. Students are choosing other things. So when you look at our school profile this year, you're going to look at the percentage of students going on to four-year colleges, and it's going to look low. I want to say it's 80-something percent, and in a low 80-something percent. We had several students, we had two students go to trade school. Six students last year decided to take a gap year. So they probably got into where they wanted to go. They may have deferred, but they're taking a gap year. Four went on for employment, one to the military, and two undecided. 103 students pursuing a bachelor's degree and nine in associate's degree. So even though that percent attending four-year college looks lower than before, it's intentional. The kids have made, you know, decisions and good decisions at that. All right, this is the important slide. Increasing your odds of acceptance. Apply early. If you don't want to apply early decision because you don't want that binding decision, make sure you just apply early action. Demonstrate your interest. Visit the school, make sure you know, make sure they know you did. Reach out to the admissions counselor. Sign up for, you know, virtual tours with your emails. Like them on social media. Make sure your social media name identifies you a little bit, and it's not just like Pokemon 3, and they have no idea who that is. Individualize your essays. Don't blanket your essay. If it's someplace that you really want to go, study the website. Find some quality that that college or university has that is important to you and that you've demonstrated that quality in things you do. Whether it's your research here at AMSA, or your job after school, or your caretaking of another adult. Make sure your essay demonstrates fit and interest. Those were the buzzwords that we heard from all of the admissions counselors over the past few weeks. It was interesting, they talked a little bit about early college. And quite frankly, they would rather, the top-tier colleges would rather see students optimize the opportunities that AMSA provides you, rather than an early college course, which are typically online and you're taking at another outside college. They stated they can't prove the curriculum, whereas your school has a proven curriculum. They stated they can't prove the curriculum, whereas your school has a proven curriculum. Participate in activities, yes, it's important, but only if it's meaningful to you and be able to tell your why. Why are you part of UNICEF? Why are you part of speech and debate or challenge success? A common question is, what qualities and strengths do you bring to our college or university? Make sure you can answer that with some quality that they're looking for at their college or university. Students need to sell themselves. Also, don't just ask for recommendations from teachers whose class you aced. Ask for recommendations from teachers whose class you struggled in but you were successful in, so they can tell that story of perseverance. That's really important to the colleges, because they want you to stay as well. All right. Questions or other input?
I feel like worthwhile on that same note of, like, do your own research about the universities. Similarly, in the professional world, if you see a job that you're interested in, you look at the, you know, the whole description, you're like, okay, cool, let me take half of these words, spin them around, and throw them back on what they want to see.
Absolutely.
Same thing kind of works for the students, where like, what's the mission statement of my school that I really want to go to? What are their core values, so on and so forth? So that's a big one as well.
And these-
How do you demonstrate those?
Yeah. These are lessons that the kids do get in their senior seminar. I definitely want to thank Kate Driver and Guidance Department. They also did some data digging. They definitely unlocked some doors for me to get into to do this myself. They were very, very helpful. But it's, don't just throw that spaghetti against the wall.
Of the schools that you profiled, do we have data on how many, if any, of our students were accepted when schools chose not to go?
That's a little bit more difficult. So Naviance, Naviance has some reports, but I, but nothing straightforward like that. I would take, it would have to, I'd have to take some time, and it's a new report in Naviance. It won't go back to 2011.
You know why I'm asking, right?
Yeah. Well, because if a lot of AMSA students say no thank you to Cornell, Cornell's gonna look away from AMSA.
I mean, they have. The data that the-
They know.
Universities have on high schools would make your head spin.
I bet.
I mean, they have institutional research departments that crunch that data, and they could tell you, like, I've got clients, they don't care what GPA you found, they're transcript. They recalculate, they specific, they recalculate the GPA specific to the high school, to the students that apply. That's great.
It's a big business, you know? I think the other thing that was clear from Yale, Harvard, and Princeton was the emphasis on first-generation students, and also the amount of money that they have to provide both citizens and non-citizens to meet their 100% need. But they seem to have this desire to get a lot of first-gen students.
It's a little nauseating as a parent.
Yes, I can imagine it would be, because I don't think that I stressed about it as much with either one of my children, but I had one that I knew hands down he would get into, because basically it was a place nobody was going.
Nauseating as a teacher.
Yeah. And on the other side, I have one who's now in her second year in college, and she did find that first year, with the exception of organic chemistry, easy.
Yeah.
Easier than I think anybody would have anticipated. She definitely struggled a lot less finding balance and being able to do it all.
Sure.
Oh, go ahead.
No, please, go first.
And I think sometimes, just from the teacher's side of things, it helps to be sort of frank about when our goals as a school for getting kids into good colleges conflict with our goals as a school of sort of being rigorous and teaching well. I recall that I've been talking about this to a parent of a friend, and I think it's, as a teacher, my class can be very rigorous, or it can be graded in that sort of tough but fair medium that I think most teachers aspire to, or it can be always helpful to get them into college, but it cannot be altered. You get to pick two, essentially, for any class that you teach. And I think being, you have to be, as a school, sort of cognizant of that fact. And I don't say this to say that, oh, we shouldn't care about this data. I care about this data quite a lot, but I think there are, there are trade-offs here that should be recognized, for sure.
I would agree. I think that, you know, I think that we can, we can do a little bit maybe of a better job highlighting some of the things that we do in our profile, and I'm gonna work with Kate Driver on that. I think that research courses that AMSA offer, there's probably a few things that we can do to make them more of a focus and a centerpiece for kids that really do love research and want to research. And then I think, you know, we are working on the articulation agreements to see how many colleges we can get to go into an agreement. Whereas where, if our students have, meet their GPA and their SAT score, that they will accept them. You're not gonna get those IDs to get into that agreement, as I mentioned, but we have our first one with Assumption College. We've got some feelers out with Mass Maritime, and we're gonna just kind of expand that. All right.
Do you think that, like, an elective course here for, like, starting at freshman year about, like, what to expect when applying to college and the admissions to students? Just to get them, like, to get their mind going about, like, how, what they're gonna face when they get to their junior year, and especially into the first half of their senior year, like, the things that they need to do?
So I can have Kate Driver maybe come one night and talk about the developmental guidance program that they do, because they do freshman class and sophomore classes, and then they do junior meetings that are individual meetings, and then senior seminar to work on more of the FAs and things like that. It's a little bit of a challenge, because when you do classes like that and all the kids take it, but then you've got the kids sitting in that class that know they're military, know they're gonna, you know, trade or something like that. It's, it can be a little challenging, but listening to Kate, I think they do a pretty, a pretty good job exposing them to that. The kids that I looked at in Naviance, their stuff was filled out pretty solidly, like, pretty completely, completely was the word I was looking for. Whereas previously where it was, you could look things up, you didn't know, because the kids, because most of what's in Naviance is self-reported, and that's where it's harder to connect that, because they don't necessarily always write, I said yes to this, or it's, it's getting better, because we're holding their feet to the fire. Come, when we do all the handing out of the senior robes and stuff like that, it's almost like, did you get your Naviance done? So we're getting better at collecting that data, but yeah, got some kind of boot camp.
I like your idea of freshman year, right? It gives you the opportunity to carry a social media profile over a four-year period.
That would be a class in itself, actually.
I was saying that, you know, if you're worried about what your Facebook looks like at the beginning of your senior year, you're a bit worried.
Yeah, yeah. SAT. So this is gonna be interesting in just that, how things differ. So this, I chose to present it this way this year, because what I'm gonna show you is basically the same, I think, 33 kids that took this test in two different, two different times. Now, there is a practice effect, but this spring, when our students took the SAT, their mean total score was 1278, which is 278 points, well, not 78, 271 points over global testers. And then you can see where we are in the state, all schools and the state public schools. So our kids are performing well on the SATs. This is what's called Fall 2024, but this is the test you take in August. And it's clearly higher, but as you can see, it's, all of it is higher. And that's because that's how they norm the test with who takes them. Always been told, take the SATs in August, though. Always. My boys did better in August, I've always been told, take the SATs in August. I don't know why.
That's shocking.
But again, you know, AMSA students are still outperforming the state and global testers. So this is just, it's kind of another piece of data that shows me that our rigor and what we're doing with our kids is still strong as ever. This is the growth that this cohort has shown from when they took their Fall 2021 PSATs through that Fall SAT. Again, if we're thinking about AMSA, its curriculum, its professionals, they're doing a great job, because we can see that trajectory and see the growth in our kids. This is growth in math. Kind of tells the same picture.
So can you help me understand what you're doing with this? Let me tell you how I'm interpreting it, because I'm sure that it's wrong, right? So the black dot, obviously, is the mean score, and I can see that going up over time, and that's what you'd expect, right?
Right.
As you continue to be prepared, you're getting-
Yep.
-major. But I'm fascinated by the idea that the size of the green bar is shrinking while that's happening.
Because, so the size of the green bar is shrinking because less kids are scoring in that area.
So how can the, how can the mean be going up-
I think it's-
-when fewer students are meeting or exceeding expectations?
So our kids are the black dots. The, the world is the colored.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay, so this isn't all-
Not, yeah, correct, 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 correct. Now, your question is spot on. It makes sense if this was the 33 kids for AMSA.
So what happens happening in the rest of the world? I mean, you would expect that everybody would get more prepared, and that the good schools would just have a higher trajectory. I mean, it should still be upward-sloping, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that may be an overall, like, the comparison group might be the whole population and not a slice of kids that are hit in each.
Yeah, so the comparison group would be-
Well, there's still Fall 2023, Fall 2024, right, for our column.
Yeah.
Is that, okay.
They're still two small groups, though, because they've gotta be kids that took the PSATs in '21, the PSATs in '22, SATs in '23, and SATs, you know, Fall '23.
Oh, that's funny.
So the two groups are relatively small. It's not every student, because not every student that took the SAT did take all of those, if that makes sense. So the AMSA group, I think there's only 33 kids in the group that they could track like that. Any other questions on SAT?
How does it compare to the world before?
Interestingly enough, you can't get that. I wanted to do a five-year for you, and the reason you can't get that is because, I think, unlike the AP exam, which is one a year, kids, like, I could compare, I could compare this to last year's fall, the year before's fall and spring. I could get those numbers, but it's not the same kids, and sometimes they take it twice, sometimes they take it. So it's really like apples and oranges when you try to look for a five-year trend there. Yeah. But the APs will do that. We'll show the five-year trend for APs. Next time, I'll do AP and MCAS for you all. So just wanted to quickly take a second, because September says, review our strategy. You remember, we worked on this in January at our retreat, and just wanted to go over a, basically, to the right are all our strategic objectives. We have objectives in governance, teaching and learning, faculty and staff development, parent and community partnerships, development, facilities and operation. And then when we, once we receive the answer to our charter renewal, which should be sometime in December, we will then work as a community on what we want as the key performance indicators. So that is why that's still blank, because that'll be whole staff will be working together to do our new annual goal-setting, and we'll identify those key performance indicators that we will measure ourselves against for the next five years of the charter. All right. Housekeeping. Yes. I thought today was the 27th, but it's actually the 26th, thank God. So main building, Transformer Rise on the 27th. Ooh, we are celebrating for sure. 20th anniversary, if anyone wants to participate, contact Marcy Echo. We did submit the expansion application to DESI. If AMSA is awarded the expansion, we will apply for additional grant money that is available to support the expansion for, like, books and materials, training, anything we need. You may start to see pushback. We are one of four charter schools who have applied for expansion this year, and it is because several districts in the state fell into the lowest 10% performance area. But the news articles are starting to come out with the typical, charters take all of our money. We need to remember that when a student comes to a charter school in the first year, the district is reimbursed 100% for the money that comes over. So it's not a straight, we take the money all the time type of situation. But if you're hearing any of that, you know, you can reach out to me, and I will help you with some language on how to navigate that. College partnerships, as I mentioned, we signed a memorandum of understanding with Assumption. Not only is it a seven-day admission decision for these students, but they are guaranteed the highest amount of merit money that Assumption provides, and there's additional scholarship money that Guidance can access for kids in need. This is my interesting housekeeping. So, I'm trying to remember when it was. I was at the lower school open house, and parents stopped in to chat with me, very concerned about our students, our drivers, and when our kids are crossing Forest Street. So I talked to Eric, and Eric let me know that in 2012, the state of Massachusetts approved AMSA as a school zone, and then had sent us this plan. So this is the plan for a school zone. And back then, my understanding is there was some back and forth between AMSA and the city of Marlboro about who was then going to pay for the signage. And I think it kind of just died, or no one pursued it, or I'm not exactly, I don't have that history. But AMSA really believes that it's our responsibility to construct our campus in a way that is most safe for kids. And we've done so by redoing the entire Loop Road, getting that one-directional traffic. Additionally, we are spending some extra construction money to create a sidewalk on AMSA property that will lead to Forest Street, rather than the kids kind of walking in the roadway, where people pull in to four kicks and pull out. So we are spending that money to help, you know, ensure safety for our kids, and we really do believe that it's the responsibility of the city of Marlboro to fulfill this AMSA school zone plan. Reached out to the mayor's office, sent him this plan- Reached out to the mayor's office, sent him this plan and asked him to consider it and be happy to have a conversation. I also emailed our counselor-at-large and other city counselors that are tied to AMSA, such as Trey Fuchilio and Mark Vidal and, again, Mr. Ossinger. And there was more and more that I'm going to forget, and I apologize ahead of time, to try to help move this conversation forward. So if you're hearing anything around this, you know, please just be advocates for our kids to help us get this signage done. Most of it's solar now, it shouldn't be too much of a big deal.
What were you talking, money was?
Eric said something like, he was like, it was about $15,000 back in the day.
I assume we also mentioned it to the mayor's transition chair?
No, we didn't. I will.
It's duly noted. It's the transition chair?
Me. Got it. Done, look at that. I never worked on something so fast in my life. Check that box, check that box.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Big thanks, big thanks. So this would really be, you know, just great for our kids, just, just to keep them safe. It's, it's pretty busy there. And any questions on the school's alumni? That's it. Look at that.
So were we, what's the, the, what did you communicate with the mayor's office?
Earlier this week.
Okay, so it's early?
It's early.
Yeah.
It's early. Yeah, I, I think maybe Monday or so, I, I heard that from Mr. Navin. And duly noted.
It's a family response.
Yes, exactly. And I said, "Okay, thank you very much."
Small thing.
Very small. So big and yet so small. Yeah. So, yeah, so the work is pretty much done. We just got to get the signage, the signage.
Yeah. I think it would also help because the police department has been very concerned with the speed coming to and from AMSA, that signage would probably be in their best interest.
And again, we, you know, we're doing things through the construction to help that. We put in some smaller speed tables around the lower side. When we do smock the white building side, they will be larger speed tables there when we finish that area to try to slow things down.
If I could actually have a quick question. Are there any plans to put a new sign up around what is now the entrance to sort of the school's loop? Because we're in the awkward situation of having our sort of big official sign at the exit, which I, just talking about it reminded me, I'm pretty sure I've talked to some staff about this. Just, are there any plans or?
So this, the new sign, yeah, so there's plans for the new sign. Like, when you pull into the white building, there's like this little circular fence that looks like it has a hole. That's where the sign's going to go, but we need the transformer first. So the sign's been designed, it looks really nice, it's electronic.
It's, it's passed.
It's passed every get ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a, that's a tough one.
Yeah. We're all good there.
Any other questions for Dr. Mann?
I, I do want to, just one more shout out again to Trey Fuchilio, former AMSA alum, because he did write a letter of support for AMSA's expansion, which was probably brave to do, so. But he values AMSA's education that he had, and I, I want to recognize him and thank him for that.
Excellent. Yes, thank you, Trey. Brave is probably an understatement, so, yeah. He will, I'm sure, get a lot of email.
Yes.
Okay, so chair business. I want to talk about two things and open it up for discussion tonight. Cultivation of prospective board members, because there are only nine of us, and board engagement in school activities. And I know I sent an email out about that. And Bella, actually, I think is probably the, who we can thank for the, the idea. But we talk a lot about our involvement in school activities and, you know, how we can be more visible as a board, right? We want the teachers and faculty and staff to know who we are and that we're accessible and that we're friendly and engaged and here to talk to. And the way to really do that is to be a part of what's happening at the school that we all sit on the Board of Trustees board. And at the same time, acknowledging that everyone has a job and lives and kids and all of these things that sort of fill our schedule. So Bella created a spreadsheet for us to keep track of what school events are coming up, what are good opportunities for us to be present on campus or off campus if it's a different event. And so we're going to do our best to keep that updated, and I'm going to put it into Board on Track. We're going to find a place for it, and I'll let everybody know where we'll live once it's there. But just to sort of, you know, set a goal for having two board members at these events, right? We're going to have a faculty holiday gathering and open house nights and all that kind of thing. So if anybody has any questions, suggestions, ways we can make it easier? Yes?
No questions, but I have a sincere suggestion. Respecting your time, Bella creating another sheet, another Excel sheet might not, it takes time for her to update it. Why don't you guys get access to the AMSA Events calendar that can go directly connect to the Google Calendar? Because our, our team, like, you know, Amala has been fantastic in setting all of those up. And like, that, you guys can just subscribe for it, and then everything is up there, the AMSA Events calendar. Instead of somebody else trying to manage that and cause more work for her, for Bella.
Well, what we did was we put columns so that we can sign up.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry, wrong, wrong idea.
But what would be awesome, and to get, can we sync it? Can we make some technology magic?
We've got some techies.
Yeah, like, that would be awesome. If we could just feed the information into it, then we can put our names, like, who's going to go.
Ah, I would talk to, I would talk to my team members and I'd get back to you.
Awesome.
I think it's possible or not.
If we can get a subscription to the calendar, then
Yeah, we can make it happen.
You've assigned me homework, let me be clear.
And thank you. I would, I would offer, but that is way beyond my scope of capability.
If I could make a recommendation as well, for board presence at these events, I think it would be helpful to have, like, I don't want to say attend, but like, some indication that, like, yes, these are board members, because especially if it's at, like, one of the faculty lunches. More, you can attest to this because you were at one of the last ones. Not everyone knows what people on this board look like. And so everyone's just kind of like sitting with their work friends, and I think the assumption might be, "Oh, I didn't know they worked here," and then not sitting with you. So like, having, having some indication that, like, "This is who I am, please talk to me."
Sarah, now, Sarah Snow has ordered everyone, yes, I say tax.
Awesome.
Like magnetic ones, so they don't
So it won't ruin my portraits?
So they don't ruin your portraits, that's what I care. So, um, so this is, I mean, I think this is really good. I know I've mentioned before that one of the things I would like to sort of do is create more of that warm, fuzzy interaction between us and the rest of the school community. So I appreciate everyone's patience and eagerness to be at different events. Second thing, any other questions on that in particular?
I guess I just want to add, there's a bunch of events this month.
Yeah.
Take a look at the list and sign up.
Yes, until it's on Board on Track, everybody has the Google link.
Yeah.
So it is mutually accessible. Next topic is cultivation of prospective board members. So we talk about this a lot. We talk about recruiting new board members often. And I don't feel, we could have a process that is official, potentially buried in the bylaws, but I don't think we've ever been, at least in my tenure, there hasn't, there doesn't seem to have been a consistent process that has always been followed. And I think it is time for us to do that. Also, as part of our sort of strategic planning as a board, we want to make sure that we live on and, and we're not just sort of, we don't get to the point where we're like, "Do you have a pulse? And you're breathing? Great, hop on." Right, that's not, that doesn't cut it for the board. And, but I also know that we know a lot of really good, quality, excited people who would be more than willing to serve the AMSA community in this capacity. We don't have any huge building, you know, things to debate until midnight coming up that I'm aware of, so it's a little bit easier of an ask. But I do think that for consistency's sake, I think typically they go through governance, and I'm looking at you, Darren, to correct me if I'm wrong. So the process kind of goes through governance, and we encourage board members to meet with prospective candidates. Ask questions, get to know them, so that there's sort of, it's not really a formal interview process necessarily, but really just an informal getting to know everyone. So that's sort of where we're at now. I want to open it up to discussion to see if folks have other experiences that outline better practices, people have ideas, thoughts, et cetera.
I have, I, I guess I'm really opinionated about this, but I had no idea that there were four subcommittees of the board until I joined the board. And you don't have to be a Board of Trustees member to be on those subcommittees. And that's how Jim started. Jim was on our finance committee, he wasn't on the Board of Trustees. And, and I think that's great because it's, it's like a succession planning idea, I guess. And it gets folks kind of more informed and educated about the school. And then, you know, if they're interested and, you know, want to be a trustee, we already have worked with this person for at least a year or more. So I really like the idea of finding more committee members and then building some sort of succession planning.
Totally support that idea. I mean, also, it's a, well, you spoke to the pipeline advantages, but it's also a good vetting vehicle, right? Because if somebody raises their hand and says, "I want to be on the whatever Development Committee," and then they never show up to participate in the Development Committee, why would you think that they all of a sudden are going to want to be a part, you know, a minor part of a larger, you know, arena?
Yeah. I think that's great. Other thoughts, suggestions?
When we have a board vacancy, do we sort of put an ad in the paper, so to speak? Is that a thing we should look into? I mean, I'm sure the concern might be that we get a lot of people who are just kind of randos, for lack of a better word. Would a bunch of randos be better than no one?
No.
Really?
So the short answer is, we always have board vacancies, right? Because there's not a fixed number of spots.
There is a target, though, if I'm not mistaken.
I hear you on the target. But it's not like there's, you know, it's not like the Supreme Court, you know, where you got nine seats. And you know, if you got a vacancy, you're trying to fill the ninth seat. So we've got minimums and maximums. And so I, I think generally, it's, it's a best practice to not be at your maximum. I serve on the university board, and we call that the Bill Gates rule. Like, we have 39 authorized spots, and we never want to be at 39 and have to amend the bylaws for when Bill Gates shows up and says he wants to be a board member. So you could genericize that to the billionaire seat, you know. And then after that, you know, the, we're looking to fill the vacancies with people that we recruit and develop and vet over a period of time. So it's not so much like, "Come, apply." Although we did identify, I think, to the community when we had needs on certain committees and asked people to raise their hand, and that's how I got to know folks and joined the Development Committee, and that's all worked out great. But, I mean, the general position, hopefully, we're not in a spot where we're like, "Oh, my God, we've got to fill a seat, and we haven't done our, our homework over the last three years to put people on committees or get them involved in other ways or with the foundation or whatever," and kind of build them up to the point where, we should have a pipeline. Where we're like, "Okay, we're ready to, this person's ready, we're ready, we have a seat available." You know, "We have a need for a particular skill set, and now we can tap into that skill set."
Is there a, sorry, Bella.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, what you were, you just said there, like, about a need for a certain skill set. Like, I think we need to talk about or put a, what our needs are, a list of, like, what do we need on this board? What kind of skills do we need on the board? And I think that would be helpful.
I, I, go ahead, go ahead.
When I signed up, especially on Board on Track, it asked me, like, the skill set back.
Yes.
So do we, do we take a look at that at the overall board to see what the deficiencies are?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's a good January retreat.
Yeah.
Could I say something more? I think, generally, there's some PR that could be done, too, because I think that this group is a mystery to a lot of people. And I think that a lot of people's impression is that it's really hard work and it's really constant work. And I'm not saying it's not, but I'm saying that
Not there at all.
In order to, I'm not saying it's not that, I'm not saying in order to attract people, there might be ways to make the barrier to entry seem slightly softer, if you understand what I'm saying. Like, I just think that to embrace a full community, maybe let it be known more what you do. Like, I don't, you know, have an oral history video up or have a, you know, shared experience or a testimony, something that just makes it seem like, "Oh, yeah, I could sync with that group. I have that skill, I could participate in that way." Because I think some people just stay away because they're like, "I don't, I'm not meeting for four hours once a month, plus a committee, plus all this other stuff." So just making it more, I don't know.
Palatable.
Yeah, I mean, not that it's not palatable, I'm just saying, some people stay away if they think that it's really going to be really time-consuming. You know, you have three kids in the school and all this other stuff. And so I think, you know, entering through a committee is great, but I think also just sort of understanding truly what the commitment is, but not in a scary way.
I, I think that's 100%, and I think what Bella said is also absolutely correct. I have a friend who has attended, I think, a few education committee meetings, not, not when I was there, before I was a faculty representative. But I've had conversations with her, and she's said, like, "What would make me a good board member?" And to be clear, she's an excellent board member. She's like, very conscientious, she's very thoughtful. But I think that that lack of, "Here is what we're looking for," can make it a high barrier of entry because there's not something to point to and say, "Oh, I'm good at that." And I don't think many people have this notion of, "Oh, I'm a good trustee of an organization." It's a pretty unique feeling to have.
I have an observation that's tangentially related to the recruitment of board members, and it speaks to the issue of time commitment. Just going to throw this out here, it's not really an action item kind of thing right now. But my observation is that there's an inverse correlation between the size of the nonprofit organization and the number of hours its board members spend meeting. So I'm a trustee of a $225 million organization, and I spend way less time in meetings for that nonprofit than I do on, sweet little $30 million year AMSA.
So if we could raise more money, that'd be
Well, I wonder why that is. Just throwing it out there.
Okay.
I just have one comment to kind of broaden your scope, too. I know that you're looking at the individual and what they can bring to the table and what your deficiencies are of the committees. Could you broaden it as to far as who are in our communities that they can bring something in? So, for example, you signed the MOU or something. Is there anybody at these particular colleges that we can get a board seat? That way, it kind of solidifies what we're doing and gives us the visibility that you were talking about, to kind of get more universities on board with that, because then we know we have people out there who are doing kind of the broader mission of what we're trying to pull in. At the same time, we're looking for individuals who can actually do the work based on their skill set.
That's great. That is a really good reminder of, it's not just the person and what they can bring, but what are the connections, right? What are those things? And Marcy, you talk all the time about connections, who do you know, what can you bring in? So, well, I think we need to do it before January, but we'll talk maybe in governance to talk about compiling that list of what it is that we are looking for, what's needed, what would be aligned with what we're trying to do as a school.
We do have more to govern it.
Yes, coming up, that has timed it a lot. Yeah. And perhaps, if anybody would be interested, I would be happy to work with Mr. Pinkel on 21st, I contacted. Maybe we do some sort of Maybe we do some sort of series on social media that really talks about, like, a bunch of us are willing to go ahead and talk about who we are, what we do, you know, what your particular situation is that, you know, could be seen as an obstacle for other parents or members of the community and why we do what we do, what we're looking for.
We do like, and we do meet at the first PTO meeting, right? I think maybe the parent rep does it and kind of explains what the board does. And so that is one way to get the word out. I mean, that's kind of how I learned about parent. A lot of us were parent reps first, so that's one, another way to get the word out.
And that, and Dwayne mentioned earlier, that that process will start again for the parent rep for next year, this race from Leona. So I think we can do a much better job of marketing us as a board. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Excellent. Okay, committee reports, development.
Development met this week, I think it was this week, earlier this week, to get our bearings on some policies, set some items up for follow-up in October, really get at the ground running for this year in terms of getting all of our ducks in a row, having conversations about, and Marcy already talked a good amount about the 20th year celebration that we're planning for next year, and we're brainstorming ideas left and right about what would be good initiatives to have throughout the year, as well as who to include in those initiatives, and obviously there's plenty of opportunity for partnerships meeting throughout that, especially calling on old contacts, people affiliated with the school or that wish to be. So more to come on that. Our meeting's on the, I think it's the 16th of October, so we'll look into also communicating with former members, well, former, current slash, I guess we'll call them, members of the development committee, see if there's still an interest amongst those in potentially, as we're just talking about, for more individuals, use that to provide more insight as well. That's it from development. Anything else?
Great. Finance.
So the finance committee met, whatever, last week, I think? So we talked about, you know, what was already posted to the agenda for consent agenda, like the construction budget and some of the contingency amounts that we have in the construction budget. Everything looks great, and, you know, it seems like we might be able to do some other things, some improvements on our facilities with that contingency amount. Leona and I, maybe a month ago, met with our investment advisors, and they had some suggestions because, you know, a change we made in the past few years is kind of be a little bit more focused and planned on our investments, and it's really done a good job for us, we've been able to get a really good yield. So they had some suggestions, we're going to hold off right now because, you know, some of the suggestions they're making are to tie up our money for three years or five years, and we're just not ready to do that right now. We need to make sure that we have some liquidity, and, which really speaks to our having a capital investment plan, which we're hoping to get done by the end of the year, and, which is also part of our financial goals. We also talked about our finance, our finance committee goals at LANCE. One of them is really like going through all of our policies that we have as a finance committee, and I don't know if any, all of you on the Board of Trustees know this, but they're posted in a folder, we edited this, in Board on Track. So if you look in, you know, if you look under the finance committee, there's maybe like 12, 14 documents that are our policies. So if you ever wondered, you know, what a certain policy was, you can go there. But it's our job to kind of review them and make sure they're up to date, or if we want to edit them. So we're going to do, we're going to tackle two that are kind of important for the next meeting, along with all the stuff that's going on for year, year end and with our auditors that, you know, that's working hard on. And I guess that's it.
Is there like a 30-second answer to the contingency fund question? Like, as we say, you know, there's money in the contingency fund that we can spend on other things?
Yeah.
Is there like a quick description of sort of like how that comes to be and how, like how it offsets, like how it can't really be used for other things, but there's certain restrictions on it?
Yeah, it's part of your fund.
So with any contingency money that would be left over after the project, there's two options. And luckily, there's two options because of the way that the loan was written. The options would be give the money back to the bank, or the bank is allowing us to spend it on capital improvements on the campus. And again, that's only because of how intuitive those were, the folks that were here at the time, when they entered that loan agreement with the bank, to create that type of language, because otherwise you would have to return the money to the bank. So we can't use it for anything else.
Thank you. I just think that's always worth clarifying. Okay, any questions for Bella for finance? All right, governance, Sheila's not here, did governance meet?
No, we canceled.
I think it's scheduled for early, like, October 9th.
Great, okay. So next governance meeting will be October 9th. And, you know, as we look down to previous meetings for policy review, I believe that's happening in governance, as well bylaws and policies, so. And then for the education committee, I did get an email, Christine is unable to be here tonight, but the committee is meeting on Monday, the 30th, so they will have a report for the following meeting. Anything else from education?
I think there was a plan to potentially go over the results of the survey from last year, because we didn't quite present all of them, and we present that at the next board meeting. I think that's the only thing we'll be meeting about on Monday, but that's...
So we can look for that in October. So previous meetings, so board policy review, that's still ongoing in governance, which has been bumped down to October 9th. For board education, there, I don't know if everybody got this link, but there is a link where, through some of the charter organizations, I guess the charter organizations and/or Board on Track, where they have workshops and webinars that we can all participate in. You can sign up and register for them, and if something happens in your schedule, you will get the recording and any materials, so you can watch it at your leisure. So I will send that around. I did get that link, and I, like I said, I don't hope everybody got that link, so what I'll do is I'll share it via email, and you guys can both mark it, and I'm going to try and at least register for every one, so that we have the materials, and if I can share them and post them, I'll do that as well.
I have a question. Yeah, I got something in my email about something that was happening like on October 25th in Rawlboro, and it was the Mass Charter School Association?
Yes. They're having their, I don't want to call it an annual, because they do it like three times a year, like they're having their convening charter meeting.
I think it's right across the street. Yeah, it's here.
Yeah.
And it's all day.
Yeah. I'll be there, I can report out.
Is that the meeting that got canceled? There was one scheduled for last week, and so it has been rescheduled.
Oh, okay.
All right. I'm not going to lie, it was really nice to get that date back on the calendar.
Yeah.
But what is the date for, the 25th?
Yeah, it was like Friday, Friday the 25th, October 23rd.
All right, we can coordinate that. Okay, and we submitted the enrollment amendment, so that's check from our last meeting. Any new action items?
I have a question. I don't know if you said earlier, when do we expect to hear on the enrollment?
December.
That should have been removed, because we confirmed them last week, last month. There's nobody else who was willing to jump onto the committee. All right, so new action items, I do have Kate Driver, talking to her about maybe coming to the board, when things settle down. Did you take a deep breath, maybe?
Maybe after the November 1st, like after...
Or the November 1st, 15th.
So maybe December, or if the board meeting is later in November, she would be able to do that.
Yeah. Let's work with her schedule. I want to put it in. I'll talk to Kate, the admissions push. Any other new action items to put on next month's agenda? Excellent. Thank you, Leona. And is that something that you want to share with us ahead of time, or? Okay, anything else? Okay, great. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Say go.
Thank you very much. All those who, this is not a vote call, vote right. All those in favor, all those opposed. Excellent. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you all for coming.